Everyone, welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the 2023 edition of the Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole, Monday, January 9th, 2023, under item one, called Order 1.1. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski. Weber. Lunskey. Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
All present, we have a call.
Thank you. Under discussion items, item 2.1, request from Half Brothers Brewing Company to change the class of alcoholic beverage license from Class 16 Brewer Tap Room to Class 3 on and off sale beer and wine. Ms. Lomack, good evening.
President Sandy, members of city council. Half Brothers has been business in the community since 2017. When they initially were approved for an alcohol license, at the city level, they got a Class 3 beer and wine license. Subsequently found out that the state license limited them to things they can sell, which seemed not appropriate then. Under our Class 3, they would have been able to sell any type of beer or any type of wine. The license they held at the state to be able to self-distribute and produce limited them to only what they were able to make. The good news, at that time then, they asked for us to create a Brewer Tap Room license that would be similar to what the license is they would hold at the state. And city council at that time did approve that. Good news story is that now their production and their sales, their business has grown. So that license they used to hold at the state is now, they've outgrown that. So they are working with the state to upgrade their license there. And so in concert with that, they would like to revert back to the Class 3 they were initially approved for here. Would result in no payment of fees other than the difference of the annual fee to reflect because the Class 3 is a higher fee.
Thank you. Questions?
They've only been here since 2017, and already it's difficult to imagine Grand Forks without Half Brothers. Great local business, move approval.
Moved by Weber, second by Weigel. Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.2 bids for Project 8651, re-roofing central fire station.
President Sandy, council members, it's my pleasure to present you with the bids for the re-roofing of Station 1. We bid it as the lower roof as the main bid, and then an alternate as the entire roof. We've decided, tried to get clever, and bid this time of year so we could possibly get someone to do the work. And the work on the lower roof needs to be done immediately, but we did get a really nice price. So we'd like to go with the alternate also.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Collins? Moved by Weigel. Is there a second? By Osowski. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Item 2.3, engineering amendment for Project 8100 Industrial Park Stormwater Master Plan. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. For about the past two years, the engineering department has been working with CPS of Grand Forks under engineering agreement task order to study the stormwater drainage in the Demers Avenue Industrial Park. This is the area west of I-29, south of Demers, and north of 17th Avenue. It's over 400 acres. You may be familiar with some of the infrastructure challenges there, some of the flooding concerns. That's what we've been working to solve. What we're requesting tonight is the first amendment to this task order, putting a little more money on this study so we can complete the study and so we can look at one very important scenario under South 48th Street, validating a concept which theoretically could be the first major project that engineering proposes for reconstruction in the industrial park. So with that, tonight, we're requesting approval of task order amendment number one in the amount of $54,800 be awarded to CPS.
Fifty-four thousand, thank you. Any comments or questions? Moved by Weber, second by Cavami. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. On 2.4, plans and specs for city projects 8619, District 774, 2023 asphalt mill and overlay, and 8660, 2023 Greenway rehab. Mr. Lieberman.
Thank you again, President Sandy. This is the engineering department's annual asphalt mill and overlay contract. It represents roughly $990,000 of work. We will be bidding four projects under one contract. The first project is the UND Neighborhood, which we brought before council back in December to create the Special Assessment District. You may recall that. The other three projects are a 500-foot section of Demers Avenue adjacent to the Amtrak station. It's the railroad crossing that's in pretty rough shape. That would be entirely city-funded from Fund 4815. The third project is the Alara Center parking lot, the next phase of that, specifically the lot that most people park on, south main entrance. You may be familiar with the potholes, and it's in very rough shape. That would also be paid for with Fund 4815. And the last section is about 3/4 of a mile of the Greenway. We routinely go in and do an asphalt overlay just to keep up the condition there. That would be paid for from the flood protection and control, excuse me, flood protection capital maintenance fund 4154. So with that, engineering is requesting approval of plans and specifications, direction to bid, advertise for bid, and approve any necessary budget amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Questions or comments? Mr. Bean? Move approval? By Bean? Is there a second? Second by Cavami? Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Item 2.5, bids for Project 8384, English Cooley diversion ditch maintenance, 17th Avenue South to 32nd Avenue South. Mr. Grasser, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. This is a project we're doing maintenance as part of our flood protection diversion. It's from 17th Avenue South to 32nd Avenue South. What we're doing is digging basically a small pilot channel through there. Get it deep enough so it doesn't refill with cattails right away. It's a technique that we've used before. It helps move the low-level water through the channel without getting obstructed by all the cattails and stuff that are there. Even when you spray them and whatnot, there's still some there and dead and whatnot. So again, it's a technique we're going to try. We're probably going to bid similar projects like these multiple years. I anticipate they're going to be successful because, again, it's been successful in the past. So with that, we did advertise for bids for the project. We opened them on January 5th. We had five bidders. The low bidder was Taggart Contracting, $85,777, and we're recommending award.
Comments or questions for Mr. Grasser?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigel. Is there a second or further discussion? Second by Bean. Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any other comments or thoughts, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.6, engineering service agreement and presentation for Project 8567, South End Interior Flood Protection Master Planning. Mr. Grasser?
Thank you. Actually, there's no presentation, and we were going to keep it short. We've actually attached, what presentation we were going to have is attached right to your staff report. It basically goes back and shows some of the flooding that we had this spring. We had an event that was kind of outside of the norm relative to the time of the year and the amount of water that was going on. And as it was, it came in almost at the same time as we were ready to close the gates to the river. So let me back up again, and you know, the history on this is, you know, Grand Forks Flood Protection Project, we have levees along the river. We have pumping stations basically to address the interior drainage and water that's coming in from outside the city. And on that presentation, one of the last areas kind of shows were some of the drainages that's coming into the city. Pretty extensive area. You know, back when the Corps was developing the project, you know, that was back in the 90s, and you know, telephones were this long and this wide and that tall, right? I mean, just example of how technology has changed. So the computational capacity and the theories and things that they were used back then, they were fine. I mean, they got us a flood protection project, et cetera. But we have seen over the years that there is some changing conditions and climatic changes that are going on. And the spring last, the rain event last spring kind of accentuated that. Very concerned if we had had the gates closed at the time that water came through, I don't, our pumps wouldn't have been able to keep up. I'll just say they wouldn't have been able to keep up. So that triggered, when we start looking out here, and this is an outlook thing for planning, both for short term and for long term. So what we found is that we're suspecting here is we're getting, you know, more water coming in from the rural areas than was kind of originally planned. So we need to figure out how to address that. And we also, as the city expands, we need to figure out what our policies are going to be to take that water. And quite frankly, I think expansion might help us solve the problem by probably requiring larger ponds than what we're doing right now. Might be one, I think is going to be a combination of one of the things that we discover in this study is that our pond should maybe be bigger so we hold that water, don't let it run off. Again, so we're looking at updating using, you know, the newest computer software, the newest climatological data, and this is to situate us, number one, so we don't have flooding today, but also when FEMA comes back and remaps the Red River, which they've said they're going to do after the Fargo diversion is done, we want to make sure they don't come back and look at Grand Forks as Lomar and say, you know, we need to update that. And then we, that's a bad time to discover that we're having a problem, if in fact we have one. And so this is trying to be out ahead of that and doing the studies and identifying, you know, do we have a problem? What's the degree of the problem? What options do we have for solving the problem so that when the time comes, not only do we have the physical protection, but we can keep our flood protection insurance components in place? So going back to last spring, we had the presentation, we kind of had a head nod from the city council. With that, we went out and we did advertise for engineering services to look at this. This is a big study. It's a big deal. Obviously, look at the dollar amounts. We did get responses from two different engineering groups because this is a big enough thing where most of the engineering needs to be done with some teams to handle all the different components. We did go through and interview the two teams. We had an interview committee. We had some city staff, public works, county, Water Resource District, good cross-section of folks. We're capturing not only people that would be familiar with the in-town stormwater system, but also those that would be familiar with the rural exterior stuff. Out of that, we have negotiated a scope of work. The selected committee group was AE2S combined with HDR and Bolton and Mink. And that's the engineering team that we are proposing to be approved tonight under the engineering task order. And the dollar amount is $568,670. For warn you, this probably won't be the last one. This gets us through what we're calling Phase 1 and whatnot, but as we look farther out, we also need to look at Drain 4, which is the drain on the south end of town, and again, looking at what do we do 20 years from now? So with that, I've said probably too much and too little. If you have any questions, I'll take a shot at answering them.
Questions? Yeah, Mr. Cavami?
Just looking at the identified fund has $250,000 in it for the budget. Is that due to the fact that the projected amount was going to span multiple years? I see the, thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty hard. You know, we don't do this kind of an engineering analysis very often, so it's a little difficult trying to pin down the dollar amount. But the $300,000 was a solid placeholder, but it doesn't surprise me that it's more than that.
Does it surprise you that we might have to do follow-on engineering? You said this might not be the last one, okay.
No, because the follow-on engineering is to look at probably what happens with legal Drain 4, that's that big drain on the south side. Someday, Grand Forks is going to span that, and that'll end up basically probably cutting the city from a flood fight standpoint. So we want to make sure we identify, for instance, how wide should that channel be? Someday, it's going to have to be much bigger and deeper probably than it is today. And I don't want to talk a whole lot about that. That's a year and a half or two years from now kind of an issue, but I, there's, we're not capturing 100% of everything under this task order. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Mr. Weigel?
Just to be clear, Mr. Grasser, some of the consequences of not doing this study or not funding the study is, sound like you've mentioned something about flood insurance premiums, additional water that's coming in that we can't really account for at this time, pump size, little bit of everything. So by not doing this study, it could have severe consequences in the future. Is that what you're saying?
It can, yeah. I think, again, with the climatic changes and everything, I, we don't want to be caught flat-footed at a time when a study comes in and FEMA comes in and goes, well, you've got, you know, 12 months before we remap you. This is a big enough issue, you won't be able to respond that quickly. You need to be ahead of that. So yes, that's, I'm confident that those consequences would come to pass at some point if we don't get started on this.
Thank you. Mr. Weber, comment?
Yeah, you actually gave us a lot of, you gave me a lot of information anyway. You mentioned the major rain event that we had last year and the consequences if the gates had been closed, meaning if we had our, if we'd been flooding at the time, which we, the gates have been closed, what, just a few weeks prior to that?
The gates were, the river was actually on the way up, and the gates, we were planning on closing them within about three to five days of when this event actually occurred. So we were at that point where we needed to shut the gates so that we could start pumping.
And then the water would have been trapped.
And those two things shouldn't have theoretically come that close to each other?
We dodged a bullet last spring.
I mean, I don't want to over-scar it here, but I think we, to a degree, we did. We had a wake-up call, we need to pay attention to it.
You mentioned more water from rural areas. Is there just more water in the system in a situation like last spring? Or are they draining fields more quickly, which is sending it our way faster? Do we have a sense of that?
I would think the drain tile is making a significant change to the rural areas in and around our community. I'll take a shot. It's not a really quick answer, sorry, I don't do it in sound bites. If you think about the rural areas out there and you think how flat it is, if you go out after a rain, you're going to see a lot of water ponding in the field, right? There's a certain amount of water that sits on the field and doesn't even run off, right? It makes ponding. But then all of a sudden, you broach that threshold where almost suddenly then everything after that point runs off. So if you think of, and I'll just, not the right numbers, but let's say you assume the Corps designed for a one-inch rain, and half of that was on the field and half of it ran off, and now our new event is an inch and a half, well, guess what? That whole next half inch is running off. So now you're running off an inch instead of half an, over that many acres, that's a lot of water. And that's my own general simplistic overview of what I think is kind of going, when I say it's changed, because the climatic conditions, we're getting that, that kind of rain that we got shouldn't have happened that early in the year. And so it wasn't designed for that event.
So your answer is there's just more, there was just more water in the system, and the drain tiles weren't a major contributing factor?
I'm not going to say I have an opinion on that. Basically, I, that time of year, it's hard to say.
Yeah. And then another thing that happened, not only did we have the overland, but our groundwater was up really high last year as well, right? I know my home, 17 years, I've never had to use the sump pump, and it ran for weeks, long, long time. And how are these connected, the overland water, the groundwater? Because we need to, the study would consider both, I'm guessing, right?
Yeah, that's where it gets sophisticated. It gets into a timing issue. If we had gotten that rain a week earlier when the ground was still froze, it would have almost all run off, and you probably wouldn't have had a lot in your sump. It came at a point in time when the ground was just starting to thaw, and so that water was then able to penetrate and get down into your sump pumps. And so again, that same rain, at different times of the year, would produce some different, and it rained like repeatedly because you also had the snow melt going on at the same time, which was adding to that situation. So if that makes sense, there's a lot of moving parts into this. So it's like a flood, there's things that have to come together and timing has to come together.
And the last couple of weeks have been, last couple of weeks, yeah, it's been dry, but even with the last couple of weeks being dry, we've had a lot of snow on the ground right now, right?
We do.
I've got more questions, but that's it for now. Thanks.
You can call if you want.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Mr. Bean?
Mr. Grasser, what, I like what you were talking about. It isn't just quantity, it's timing. As we all know, that's as big an issue as the volume, but if not in this study, or would it not be maybe a future study, we'd be able to understand the impacts of Fargo diversion on us in some ways because, you know, we've been told one thing and what those impacts would be, but this would be certainly important to validate that and what's happening. And I do know in a previous legislative session, I was able to get some language in there for impacts, should something, should we need some help because of that? And I see this as being very valuable for us.
This will be a piece of that puzzle, I believe, yes.
Great.
It's a no-brainer.
It is absolutely a no-brainer. Move approval. Moved by Weber, second by Osowski. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Good information this evening. Item 2.7, scoping engineering services agreement for Project 8658, East Grand Forks, Grand Forks, Red River Crossing. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, David and I, and of course, Al, we're here for any questions or answers that you may have. If I could mention some of my takeaways, the recommendation is still the same, that we would split disagreement in four ways. So that's for Grand Forks, it'd be $37,792.50. We take that out of our highway users account to pay for that. But I think, number one, from last week, thanks for the great participation that we had at the meeting. I think your colleagues from East Grand Forks really did appreciate that. That was heartfelt words. I thought the SRF consultant did a nice job explaining things. I thought he did a nice job. I think Council President Sandy really brought up some really good thoughts on the traffic model that we have, and it sounds like right now we're coming in an opportune time of updating our 2045 to 2050. And sometimes you get in a mode of just incrementalizing things to death, and I think it's a time for us to take a harder look at traffic impacts. I think that was, what model are we using? How are we counting? What kind of models are we using? So that was a lot of great discussion. I think we, David and I mentioned the staff report. Number two, Phoenix School Safety and all school safety, we should do it now, whether we have a federal grant or not, and we are doing that. So that's the other point of takeaway. The other thing we heard is the utility, this is really a utility study of a bridge or bridges in Grand Forks, getting to that point. And then finally, there are some federal grant opportunities if we can get to a point of really solidifying what we have for information that we could seek federal grants as part of this current federal infrastructure bill that was not in previous, where they wouldn't allow planning grants like they will currently. So I think what I heard is that we should get ourselves ready for opportunities, similar to what we've done with the underpass at 42nd and Demers and the interchange that are going quite well, is what I heard. The other thing, I think it was a conversation with Stephanie Hallford of the MPO about whether they can help fund this with their planning monies, and the answer was no, unequivocally from what I heard. So with that, David and I stand for any questions, and we always have Mr. Grasser in reserve to help you out with the conversation. Thanks, President Sandy.
It was a good meeting last week. It's always good to get together with the folks from East Grand Forks. Are there thoughts or comments? Mr. Weber, yes, sir?
In the handful of items that we've addressed already tonight, we've already approved $1.7 million in funding. Over 600,000 of that was just planning. What we're being asked for here, so $1.7 million we've approved, over 600,000 of that was for planning. This particular item is asking for us to commit less than $40,000 with three other entities, including two from out of state, contributing over $100,000 towards this gathering of important information to help us move forward. With that, I'll move approval.
So motion by Weber. There's a second by Lunskey. There are additional comments or thoughts? Yes, Mr. Weigel?
I don't know that I'll ever support, I should rephrase that. It would take a lot for me to support an inner-city bridge. I do, however, support a Maryfield Bridge. So I struggle with, do I vote no on this, and it doesn't move along the Maryfield Bridge, which I think is ultimately what the city of Grand Forks needs, and I think it's what's in our best interest. And so that's where I struggle with it. I think the, I think some of the studies need to be done, and we need to continue to move that Maryfield Bridge forward as our first option, and I'd be willing to vote in favor of that, but also knowing that I am not supportive of a Maryfield, or not in support of an inner-city bridge at this time.
Mr. Weber, yes, sir?
Mr. Karyinko, is it possible to move forward with this study in that they could look at all of the factors and decide that we need a bypass bridge and there is no need for an inner-city bridge? Or the opposite? We don't know the outcome of this. Is that a possibility?
Councilmember Weber? Yeah, that is a distinct possibility that this further study may end up finding that out. That's part of the whole scoping report, looking at the different aspects of it, and then ultimately also looking for those federal funding opportunities as well to get into the planning aspect of it and delve into greater detail on the traffic analysis, the socioeconomic aspects, and a number of other important items as well.
And funding opportunities, getting others, the feds, et cetera, to pay for this. And so we have a role to play as members of this council, and we're not just going to become a technocracy that we just let engineers make all of our decisions. There are decisions that we are responsible to make. But at this point, we have politicized a discussion that, for me, at least up to this point in the gathering of this information, needs to be driven by the technical considerations. And in fact, these technical considerations will even include political controversies, socioeconomic issues, et cetera. So for under $40,000, and we've just approved $1.7 million with over 600,000 of that in planning funds, this is being asked for just less than $40,000 from us to make a decision that will serve the community with one bridge, two bridges, whatever it might be, probably for the next century, at a time when there is the opportunity for not just federal funds to help build a bridge, but federal funds for planning as well. Because this $150,000 is just the first step. A NEPA process is probably going to be $2, $3 million or more. There, that was me going on and on for too long.
Mr. Karyinko, can I ask a question? When I ask this the right way? Because I want to be very soft and nice to you, because I like you very much.
Appreciate that.
I don't understand where, and I'm looking at the response, the proposal. It's got a series of tasks, task 1 through 8. I don't see in any of these tasks where they could possibly come up with identifying whether we need one bridge or two bridges. I don't understand how they get that out of a planning, and correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that this study is a planning study to provide us a roadmap to help us in the future identify the process to build a bridge. Is that substantially accurate? Okay.
That is correct, yes.
Knowing that, knowing that they're going to provide us a plan to get us from here today to all the regulatory and everything we should need to know to be able to build a bridge. I don't know how in this study, where they could come up with the concept that we only need one bridge, or perhaps the bridge should move to a different location, or I don't understand that in the tasks.
And I do apologize if I gave a confusing answer before. That would end up coming later on in the.
That would be a follow-on, yes. That is not part of this, that is not part of this study. No, 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 no problem. I just, I wanted to make sure that we all had the same information. I believe that just in general, the reason that we're here today looking at this study is based upon previous studies that have already been done and previous transportation plans that were done. And I think I let people know. And I think I let people know at the previous Grand Forks, East Grand Forks meeting, I think the data that got us to this point is flawed. I think the studies that were done were based upon bad inputs. And I'm all for getting a roadmap, and I think we should. Again, I would support a Maryfield Bridge study to get us a roadmap. And if we can then leverage that in the future, again, in my opinion, after the 2050 transportation plan comes out, and they look at the different, they do a better transportation study, in my opinion, to make sure that then we get a good idea of the cost-benefit ratios of where a bridge could potentially go if we were to get to the point of an inner-city bridge. I think we should be able to leverage the roadmap that they create if we do one for a Maryfield Bridge. Would you agree with that, Mr. Kryko?
I believe that's a fair statement.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Mr. Veen? Yes, sir?
Help me, Mr. Sandy. I'm trying to interpret what you just said.
It's a good question. I think that if we were to, I'm not supportive of naming the locations for the bridge, because I don't believe it's necessary to move forward in getting a planning document to get us from today to how we could put a shovel in the ground. I don't think it's necessary. If we're going to name locations, I would support a Maryfield Bridge study and not an inner-city bridge study, because I disagree with the locations chosen. But, and I believe that if we did a study for the Maryfield Bridge location, for example, if we have to name a location, I believe if we did one for that location, the process outlined in that study would work for any bridge, whether it's, because it's to help us build the bridge between North Dakota and Minnesota, get through North Dakota regulations, Minnesota regulations, federal regulations. I don't think the location has, makes any difference, based upon what I'm seeing in their proposal. So I don't know why we have to name a location. But again, I could be completely wrong. I could be missing something. Yes, Mr. Veen?
I'm quite opposite of Mr. Weigl. I would rather go for in-town first versus Maryfield, but not declaring a location and doing the study. I was able to talk to the former deputy director for planning at the North Dakota DOT, and she acknowledged that if you have controversy, especially on a location and other pieces of controversy, pedestrians, elevations, all of that, the way that we'll probably get the best accurate data is through a full EIS. Because by federal law, they're required to look at all of that, required to get all the public input. It takes the burden off of us and the politics sometimes to validate what would be the best for us. I see that as step number two, I think. I think what I'm hearing is that we need to get it to that point, and that that's what this would do. Because I really do agree, we have to look at pedestrian safety. I think that that's one of the critical parts about it, as well as vehicular safety, on how we would do this. So I think that this is a logical step forward, and not have to name it, and that just, that's, and then I think, Mr. Sandy, I'd heard that getting better data would make you feel better, and make us all feel better. I mean, I think what we want to do is make our decision on sound data that we can get our arms around. And this is an avenue for getting that done. So that's why I support what we're doing.
Further comments? Mr. Weigl?
I would just add one thing. I learned a new word from Mr. Weber tonight, and I actually Googled it to make sure it was legitimate, not that he would lie to me. But, Mr. Veen, we do study after study after study, and I would agree with you that, on the technical aspect, that these studies are accurate, whether it's water, whether it's roads, whatever it might be. But within those studies, we never look at the human factor. And that's all the people that live within these areas. I said from the very beginning, there is nobody that I have talked to that is excited for a bridge going down 32nd Avenue South. But everybody that I've talked to is excited for an underpass or overpass at North 42nd and DeMers Avenue. And so when we say we're going to do these studies, and we're going to look at, you know, the political impact for us, seven people up here, I don't know that these studies encompass everything that we're going to deal with. And I really think that if we are going to have the serious discussion about an inner-city bridge, then we need to have it posted on our agenda and let everybody know weeks and months in advance to come in here and give us their perspective. And I think that's important, because I don't think these studies properly address the political aspect of what we're going to look at. Technologically, and everything that goes into it, I agree it probably will, but not that other aspect.
And the only response is, that's what I hope the EIS does, takes that part to a higher level than we've done in the past, than get that information.
Mr. Weber?
Is it possible to amend the current agreement for the scoping services, to eliminate the references to 32nd and Elk? I think it shows up twice in that agreement. And just simply eliminate those two references? And move forward with scoping services for bridge crossings, or river crossings?
I would imagine so. That's something that we'd obviously have to speak with East Grand Forks as well. I know, I would have to look back and see what their counsel actually, what their motion and approval was for. I believe it was for an agreement for a certain number of dollars. That's something we can certainly discuss with East Grand Forks, and see if that's an issue or not.
In the discussion with Mr. Holty last week, it was my understanding that the study should be, the study and the process, the process should be telling us what the best location should be, rather than us saying, we want you to study these locations. In fact, the process would resist us predetermining location. The process is supposed to make that determination for us. Including whether it's one bridge, two bridges, whatever, that the process should make that recommendation. And a slight question modification, the scoping study and the NEPA would consider socioeconomic, political controversy, et cetera, right?
The NEPA process would.
The NEPA, not the scoping services.
Correct.
Mr. Krami? Yes, sir?
I'd just like to express that I agree with City Councilman Weigl, wholeheartedly. I think there is a great opportunity to just go through the process. If the motion would be modified to state that we would support it removing the two sites of the inner-city bridge, and looking at the study of just the process of bridge between North Dakota and Minnesota, I would vote in favor.
Yes, Ms. Lunskey?
So I know the MPO has done a lot of work, and the studies that are out there, I think before we called the public, I wish we could get the public the correct information. You know, people come up to me, and someone said, where's the millions of dollars coming to tear down all these houses if a bridge is built on 32nd? Well, that's not true. You know, I've heard from the MPO that 65% of Grand Forks supports a bridge on 32nd. So I'm just curious how we get the public the correct information. And I'm also curious, what's our position on Maryfield after this study? Since it's not in the city, what's our involvement as a city council? I mean, the city is not, has no funds in it, correct?
Ms. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, Councilmember Lunskey. Theoretically, well, it could be the reverse, because a bridge inside the city is actually inside the county, too. Sometimes people forget that. I think in this case, I think our help could come from, if you just looked at river crossings, you could determine that really this bypass is the most important bridge. And then maybe we agree through an intergovernmental agreement to help cost share, as part of the local cost share with Grand Forks County. You certainly could do that as part of it. I think that could be an outcome that could, we could all arrive at, in that what's helped move it forward as a partner with the county.
Anything further, Ms. Lunskey? No? Mr. Weber?
We have a political responsibility to make the ultimate decision. But we need to make it based upon the best technical information. And until this study moves forward, we're not going to have that. And we need this study to move forward unfettered by political limitations. So that's maybe the last thing I'll say on this.
And Council President Sandy, to that point of just trying to eliminate the words, our city attorney, Mr. Gosdod, did some quick editing. So I think if you look at the SRF letter that is dated November 4th, 2022, first paragraph after, Dear Mr. Mur, you have develop a new crossing, and in that last sentence on that first paragraph, you would say to pursue a river crossing or crossings of the Red River. You would eliminate bullet one and two thereafter, which specifically mentions those. And then you would have, under the scoping phase, you would, you know, you would have, you're seeking a review of that. So you would really just be eliminating those two bullets right after that first paragraph, really notating those, and thereafter, it's a river crossing or crossing study.
I'm willing to modify my motion to include that change in language.
Council President Sandy, we would, upon approval, obviously this would go to the city council, upon that, I presume that we would inform East Grand Forks that here's what we approved, and have them hopefully make any corrections. I know Grand Forks County is awaiting on what we're doing here, and I would also inform Grand Forks County, and I would ask East Grand Forks to inform Polk County that hopefully we move forward with this, and we're asking for you to concur in what we've approved.
So here's the compromise that I think I'm asking for. We eliminate any reference to 32nd and Elk, and we change the language to river crossing or crossings. And let the technical process then give us the best possible information for moving forward.
Hey, so there, you and, so Mr. Weber, are you withdrawing your previous motion? Or are you, because we have a motion and a second already.
I'll withdraw my previous motion and make a new motion to.
Is that, Ms. Lunskey, do you concur with withdrawing the original motion? Okay, thank you, Mr. Weber.
And then a new motion to approve the agreement with those revisions.
Is there a second? I think I can support that. Okay, there is a motion and a second. Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kryko. Last item on, well, last item on the work agenda, 2.8, amendment number two.
Mr. Kryko wanted to add.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Kryko.
If I could just make a general announcement regarding the public input meetings and that sort of thing. There is a public input meeting that the North Dakota Department of Transportation is holding this upcoming Thursday at the Hampton Inn and Suites regarding the south-end interchange for I-29. That's being held from 5:00 to 7:00, the Hampton Inn and Suites, 2985 South 42nd Street, here in Grand Forks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kryko. Sorry about that.
Maybe I could ask, Mr. Kryko, what are we supposed to do, other than maybe show up? Is there something we should do at that public input meeting?
Well, expressing your comments, questions, concerns, there is going to be a presentation at that meeting at 5:30.
Is that, do we have that on the city's calendar?
We get it on. I believe it actually already is, already sent over to Mr. Weigl.
Great.
We'll make sure we get that on.
Excellent. Thank you. Item 2.8, amendment number two to the pre-construction services agreement between the city and PKG to include pre-procurement of long lead-time Phase 1 equipment wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Phelan?
Council President Sandy, members of the committee hall, I am here with Sean Gaddy and Wayne Kraszewski of A2S. We do have an 11-page slide deck, if you're interested in that. We have also attached that presentation to it. But really, what's in front of you is, as part of the initial Phase 1 development, is to move forward with purchasing some long lead-time parts, so eventually they can get installed as part of the wastewater treatment plant. That's really what we're asking. But because there were questions on the wastewater treatment plant in Phase 1 and 2, if you're interested in us, it's attached to the agenda. But if you're interested in providing the overview, I have two of the experts that can go over with that. But we'll leave that up to you, if you want to see the overview.
Any questions or comments?
Or approval?
Moved by Weigl. There's a second by Osowski. Any additional, anyone with comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Under item three, other items, 3.1, a legislative update. Mr. Bernstrom, good evening.
Hi, Council President Sandy, members of the council, as I get our website up here, just letting you know, we're a week into the session. So far, 366 bills have been introduced by the North Dakota Legislature. Just to put that into perspective, at the last legislative session, 935 bills were introduced. The deadline to get bills in for the House is next Monday, and for the Senate is the Monday after, the 23rd. So there's a lot of work for Legislative Council, Mr. Weber. We had that conversation on Friday, a lot of work for Legislative Council here in the next, in the next several days. From the city of Grand Forks standpoint, we are working off of the approved legislative priorities that were approved in November. As you take a look here, this is our city website, and if you just scroll down, you see we have legislative session right here. All the bills we're going to track, we're going to have on our website, pretty much what we're doing is the state has all the bills in place. We are pretty much mimicking what the state has, we're just paring it down to things that are pertinent to our information. So while you're on here, there are various things, you can contact your legislators, I'm going to get you right to bills, bill tracking. So here are the bills we're tracking. As you can see, it's by the numbers, and you get a quick description. Probably the most important thing is under the categories right up here. We break it down, you can break it down by House bill, Senate bill, bills we support, bills we oppose, but more importantly, our legislative priorities. So you can break it down by priority. So just to go through a couple of bills, we'll just go right through them right now. Under infrastructure, that's a big one. Here are the bills we're tracking by infrastructure. I want to point out, Mr. Veen, as I'm looking at your, as you've been involved in this process before, the North Dakota DOT budget bill is House Bill 1012. Within that bill, it's a big bill, right? The presentation of the bill took an hour and a half. But within that bill, they have asked for $140 million to go into a fund that they want to set up this legislative session, in a flexible transportation fund. The idea in that is they want to, what's the term, Todd? They want to go the last mile. State funds can only go on state highways. Federal funds have certain designations, and then the rest falls on local political subs. What they're finding is there are stretches of road, they're normally not that, not that long, that don't fall under the other, under any program, and they're too expensive for the local political subs to fix. Fix, maintain, improve, whatever it may be. They use an example, the soybean crushing plant being built in Castleton, there's a township road, they said it was just a, is a trail pretty much, that didn't fall under a state program, didn't fall under a federal program, and the township there had no way to get that road up to code to connect to the soybean crushing plant. It sounds like Cast County stepped up and did that. They say they've had requests of $2 billion that the state has had to say no to for funds of this sort. And so they're starting this process of $140 million. So we're really paying attention to that flexible transportation fund, which is Senate Bill 2113, and they're funding it through the Department of Transportation budget in 1012. Underneath are water projects, the water resources budget is Senate Bill 2020, that has a Rutter Valley water supply, has municipal water source budget in it, so we're keeping eyes on that one. Under public safety, which also includes public health, you had Mr. Doolittle present to this council during the priorities discussion, talking about behavioral health. And there are several bills related to behavioral health, but Mr. Doolittle has let me know we're really paying attention to Senate Bill 2128, regarding those behavioral health centers around the state. And then a big one that is coming up here this week, under ND-PERS. We've seen it in the news, we've read about it. The state legislature is taking a look at eliminating the North Dakota pension plan. And they have two bills, House Bill 1039 and House Bill 1040. The only difference between these two bills, 1039 ends it in 2024, 1040 ends it in 2025. Other than that, the bills are identical. These two bills are being heard. are being heard in the Government and Veterans Affairs Committee on Friday. We do plan to send people from Grand Forks to provide testimony in opposition to the closing of those plans. Part of it is we haven't seen an alternative to those plans. So that is 8:30 on Friday morning where we will have, be providing testimony in opposition to those bills. And then one bill that popped up today under Community and Economic Development for our CTE centers. Locally, they did a really good job raising money, got the federal grant, got approved of that, but the federal money hasn't come through yet. So here they sit. House Bill 1199 is taking a loan from the Bank of North Dakota and paying for those federal grants to everyone that got them. And then the Bank of North Dakota will get paid back when the federal money is released. So that is 1199 tied to our CTEs. And of course, all these bills you can take a look at yourself and we'll be continuing to track them, expecting 600 to 700 more bills to come our way here in the next week or so. So with that, I'll leave to any questions unless, Mr. Weber, you have something to add.
Mr. Weber, something to add or questions?
Nice job, John. A quick question, 1199. Does that include the inflationary bump as well for increased costs?
They have the language in there. I didn't get into too much detail, but they referenced inflation and stuff like that. So I'm not sure to what amounts, but at least they acknowledge it.
Hot off the press. Thanks for that information. Nice work. Thank you. Anyone? Mr. Veen?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks, Mr. Bernstrom, for the work you did. I think the way this is set up, the access to where the city is, what we're monitoring and what direction we want to see this go, and it's been just really, really great. I think the work that you and the department and everybody has done, it's just been good. So I just want to say thanks for that and for people to use this because it's really, really good. And Mr. Weber, Mr. Phelan, along with all the staff have done just amazing job here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Phelan, we'll be here, what, every committee of the whole? Every committee of the whole giving you updates as things go on.
Great. We should actually do it earlier and I think there are a lot of people that would like to hear it, that maybe have tuned us out by now. Thank you, Mr. Bernstrom. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Bernstrom? Hearing none. Great.
Thank you.
Any further council member comments for the good of the order?
Move we adjourn?
None. Moved by Weigle. Second by Osowski. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We adjourn.